I would now like to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, December the 20th, 2023, our last meeting of the year. I will note for the record, all three commissioners are present here in the net, IU Hill Room. I'll start with the public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we will go to department updates. Ms. Kelly is here in crushing. Morning.
Yes, good morning. So just a few updates. Statewide COVID cases are still increasing. We still do have updated vaccines available through our public health clinic. We also still have information on our website about where vaccines are located in the area. This is still being updated every Monday right now. Influenza rates are still moderate in Indiana. We do still have flu vaccines available, as well as RSV vaccines for adults 60 and older through the public health clinic. And the department is now able to provide quit-for-life tobacco cessation referrals for support. So you can call 812-349-2150 for more information.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions or comments from my colleagues?
No, I don't. None. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Is there any other department with an update today?
I have a brief update.
Okay.
And I guess I'm with the legal department, but this may be more of a capital improvement board update. I just wanted to report to you guys that I went to the city's redevelopment commission meeting on Monday to talk about the RDC-owned properties that surround the courthouse. They seemed supportive, but wanted more information. I think they wanted to know what the bonding capacity is and really want the CIB to kind of make the request as to, or at least give an indication as to where they're going. I said, you know, don't have that information right now, but, you know, the hope is that we would have resolution to all these issues by spring, so it doesn't hamper any of the design or moving forward. I've also been in communication with the city legal department about the interlocal. We're going to look at the ordinance and compare it to the interlocal to see where there's any discrepancies and determine, you know, between the two of us, what's the best route to review those. Clearly, at this point, the county council and the commissioners have not approved the current version of that, and we've heard from the public about issues along with consistency with the ordinance as well as the building corporation issues. But, you know, given where we're at and the council's not going to meet this year, I think the big question is, how did the CDC resolution? How does the county council feel about how that works? So that's kind of a, I'm with the legal department, but still, it was more reporting on the activities with the capital improvement.
Would either of my colleagues like to say anything in response to that? I'd like to say that we know that there's a need to move forward on this. We're not just sitting on our hands. But at this point, I'm not comfortable in bringing this back to the commissioners until after the council has figured out what they want to do about this convention and visitor center board and the appointments to that. And I also have a little bit of difficulty with the current language regarding the building corporation, but I hope that we can work with the new mayor and the new city council and get this resolved very early next year. But I do appreciate also the work that the CIB has been doing. They have moved forward pretty quickly. They've gotten in touch with the previous architect and others, and it's good to see their notes. So, thank you. Is there, at this point, any other department that has an update? If not, we'll move on. For public comment, this is for items not on the agenda. We ask people to limit their time to three minutes, and please state your name and whether or not you're a Monroe County resident. I don't see anyone either in the net IU Hill Room or online, so we will move on to approval of the minutes.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion on both minutes here. Move approval of the minutes for December 13th, 2023, and move approval of the minutes from the executive session meeting for November 14th, 2023.
Second. Any corrections or additions?
No, I wasn't present at the executive session, but it's just a blanket statement.
Right. So all those in favor of approving the minutes from December 13th, 2023, and the executive session meeting minutes from November 14th, 2023, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of the claims docket. It's accounts payable for December 20th, 2023.
Second. And we have Ms. Miller here. Morning.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for December 20th, 2023 totals $9,475,110.88. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
No. Thank you.
It was a lot to read through. Yes, it was a lot to read through. And I did contact Ms. Miller about one item where it had a negative, but it didn't include the fact that it was a credit, so, yes. It's taken care of. Is there any public comment on this item? See, none. I'll call for a vote on approval of the claims docket, accounts payable December 20th, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. I will note for the record that we do have a report from our treasurer for November of 2023. And with that, we'll move on to new business.
I move approval of the renewal with the ERS wireless agreement, fund named County General, fund number 1,000, the amount of $21,600.
Second. And we have, is Ms. Nibel with us? Or is...
I know that Ms. Nibel's been having problems with the link, and she's trying to get back on, or get on, so maybe you would want to push that one down the agenda a little bit?
Or do you want me to just...
Yeah, it's pretty standard.
I mean, this is a fairly routine agreement. It deals with our outdoor, with our support for our tornado sirens. We have 41 tornado sirens, and we want them to work.
Yes. Comments or questions?
This is pretty routine, but also pretty important.
Yeah. Yes. Vital.
Yes.
Is there any public comment on this item? See, none. I'll call for a vote on the renewal of ERS wireless agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of IU Health Public Clinic Services, fund named Local Public Health Services, fund number 1161, the amount of $222,200.
Second. And we have Ms. Kelly back with us.
Yes. So this is just an annual renewal, so we do contract our public health nursing services through IU Health Bloomington, so not too much has changed. We have increased the payment slightly for this contract period. In addition, a few additional reporting and meeting requirements have been added to this. This is just in an effort to get more frequent updates about what is going on and what services are being provided, what vaccine we have available. In addition, making sure that we are working directly with these core services that are going to be required.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
None.
So I know that at the state level, the state is actually putting a lot more money into public health. They're finally realizing that it's critical for all, everybody around the state, so thank you for working on this.
Yes.
Is there any public comment on this item? See, none. Call for a vote on contract IU Health Public Clinic for services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of Bloomington High School North internship agreement.
Second. Ms. Kelly again.
Yes. So this was previously discussed on December 13th. I did reach out and confirm that this is an agreement directly with Bloomington High School North, so this will just allow us to take a high school student as an intern starting in 2024, just for a few hours, a couple days a week in the morning.
Very good. Questions or comments?
This is a wonderful idea, a wonderful program, and I know it takes staff time, but I think the investment in the community is well worth it, so thank you.
Yeah, I agree, and the opportunity to encourage others to look at the field is certainly very important.
Well, I want to explain to the public that it's every other day because Bloomington High School North has only blocks eight scheduled, so they're there Monday, Wednesday, one week, and then the next week, they'll be there Monday, Wednesday, Friday, kind of thing. So it evens out. But yeah, I think this is fabulous. I hope we'll get some really qualified students.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Is there any public comment on this item? See, none. Call for a vote on the Bloomington High School North internship agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of the clinical training affiliation agreement.
Second. And again, Ms. Kelly.
And again, so this was previously discussed at the work session on December 13th. One thing that I did forget to mention during that is this is a pilot program, so there is an understanding that we are one of four health departments that are actually going to be trialing this system, so it may evolve and change from month to month, and that's essentially just to help determine how this can be implemented across the state for the future.
One of four, that's pretty incredible.
Yeah.
I know also that counties allocate different amounts of money to their public health department, and so I hope that this is an acknowledgement of the good work that's being done in Monroe County.
I think being a pilot program indicates the robust nature of our public health services here, so it's really a testament, so thank you and your staff.
Yes. Is there any public comment on this item? See, none. A call for a vote on the clinical training affiliation agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. We're going to just keep you here at the podium, I think, for the meeting. Next item, please.
I move approval of the new professional services agreement with a grant amount of up to $20,000.
Second. Again, Ms. Kelly.
Yes. And lastly, the work, this was discussed at the work session on December 13th as well. So this is a new statement of work for the Path for You program. This will provide a one-time payment of $10,000 to be able to be used for administrative fees, costs for a part-time employee, to be able to fully implement this program, increase our technology, thereby increasing our services that we're providing to our patients.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
This says that it's up to $20,000, so if you have a need for more funds, can you go back to IU and ask for additional money?
Yes.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the public? See, none. I'll call for a vote on the new professional services agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item. Our motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of the Health Foundation of Greater Indianapolis Grant Agreement, fund named Syringe Exchange, fund number 9130, and the grant amount of $25,000.
Second. Ms. Kelly.
Okay. And this is just another, we've been receiving this grant for many years. This does support our syringe service program. This strictly funds the syringes for that program. The Board of Health did officially approve this to be moved forward on December 14th.
Questions or comments?
I'm just proud that this county has had this program for so long and really supports it.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Yes, I appreciated also the letter from, that we got from Dr. Britton, talking about the health benefits of this, for sure. And it goes along with the harm reduction program that we're trying to support also. This is a life changer, and right, we're one of only eight out of the 92 killings in Indiana that have this kind of thing, so I really appreciate the work that's done. Is there any public comment on this? See, none. I'll call for a vote on the Health Foundation of Greater Indianapolis Grant Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
I move approval of the American Rescue Plan Act Policy Revision Number Eight, fund named ARPA, fund number 8950, and the amount of $3,750,000.
Second. And is it going to be Mr. Cockrell or Ms. Whitmer?
Well, I could start us off, and if Kelly wants to come up, she can. This is, this was proposed about a month ago, and we talked about this at a joint session with the county council. The county council appropriated this funding for this purpose, and then this item was tabled at the early December commissioner meeting, and so now it's coming back to you for review. This is for the Karst Athletic Field Improvement. This is kind of one of three pots that we are looking at paying for this. I know we're looking at a geo bond, and then ARPA, and I...
And CDC.
And then the Convention and Visitor Center has also allocated $500,000 for this, so that we've got those three funding sources, and this is to provide for two turf fields at the Karst Athletic Center, as well as drainage and other maintenance slash improvement items for the other fields out there. So that's what the final project is that has not been approved and is before you today.
Comments or questions?
I want to thank Ms. Whitmer for working with me on this because I had questions about costs and expenses and how they compare, and so I appreciate that that information's been added. And, you know, everything is guesswork in terms of, you know, how many times you're going to rent and all of that, but this is clearly a real benefit to the entire community, so I absolutely support it. But there were questions about cost differences and revenue differences, and it's really going to be, I think we could see from the packet, that there's really some great potential here for increasing tourism in the county, which just helps everyone and all the small local businesses as well, so.
Comments or questions?
Well, aside from increasing tourism, it is also something that will be very much appreciated by our local youth soccer group.
I tend to, I try to attend as many of the Parks and Rec Board meetings as I can, and our local soccer travel teams leave here because we can't provide the facilities, and this will keep those dollars in Monroe County as well, and it'll save the families time, do other things for us. I also think that it's important to point out that this covers lighting as well, which allows for better use of the fields at night. One of the things I've learned, too, is that with these artificial turf fields, they won't have to take a field out of play as often to let the existing fields heal, the grass to regrow. And the Parks Department does a fabulous job of trying to keep up with things, and they walk those regularly. They have people that are out there on a regular basis, and soccer's a big deal in our community.
It is.
It truly is. But they're also used for things like rugby and flag football.
Flag football.
Lacrosse.
Lacrosse.
Quidditch.
Oh, yes.
So they do get used very regularly.
Yeah.
So at this point, I'll ask for a public comment.
Good to see a full house today here at the chambers. I'm here to support this, and I'm, you know, I don't want to echo, this is Christopher M. G., excuse me, from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, a Monroe County resident and a parent of a youth soccer child. I just want to say, this is, you know, when we talk about this ARPA funding, it looks, there's some sticker shock, and I understand Commissioner Thomas is sort of skepticism on it, but we look at the facts and look at the investment. This is taking care of a very big Monroe County asset, which is Karst Park, which I think is just a gem of, a gem of a park here within the county, and it's important that we sort of invest in that and that, you know, we like new things. It's, these are great, but it's, I think, when we're talking about what we have and investing in it, and, you know, Commissioner Givens mentioned a couple things on why the artificial turf on sort of an environmental level and sort of use level, but, you know, just, you know, doing research before I got here at my birthplace, which is in Belleville, just looking at O'Fallon and what they, their report came out in August, they doubled in six months their tournaments compared to the previous year. This is a big deal. People want to come to Bloomington. We are much easier to get to than a lot of those northern suburbs that we, you know, that we're competing against, and so when we put this investment, I think we're going to get paid back in that tourism dollars, which, you know, are going to be doubled in money from out of town, which is restaurants, which is hotels. And I think this is, this is great, and I appreciate that we have a full commissioner, commissioners sort of going over this and making sure that this is what we want to do, but, and this is, you know, the ARPA funds is not singular. We're doing other things with the ARPA funds, and this is a great investment, and I appreciate your time today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. M. G. Is there anyone else who has, who wishes to make a comment? I see Jeff McKim has his hand raised online. Please join us.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Jeff McKim, Monroe County Council member. And commissioners, I want to thank you for taking this item up today, and greatly appreciate your comments and support of this upgrade to the Karst Farm Athletic Complex. This is an opportunity to use some of our ARPA money on an investment in our own county infrastructure, on a project that's been discussed for years and that will have lasting benefit for the community. Soccer and other field sports see wide and diverse participation among all parts of the county, all ages, and all socioeconomic statuses. This project will certainly see benefits in terms of bringing in tournaments and tourism, reflected in the $500,000 investment by the CBC Convention Visitors Commission, but really, this is a project to benefit our local residents, one that local residents will appreciate and value for years to come. So I greatly thank you for your consideration and the opportunity to walk together to support this investment in the Monroe County community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McKim. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Kelly Whitmer, Director, Monroe County Parks and Recreation. I've talked to you probably for years about these projects, and I do appreciate, the park board appreciates, Cutter Soccer appreciates this investment. It is a long-term investment. The synthetic fields will help let us rest the grass fields in also to do, we will have a growing pains for 20, the year 2024, because we will have to take two grass fields out after the synthetics come in. It'll take 18 months at least to get them back rotated, so there will be some pain in the transition, but it will work out in the long run, and the investment is a tremendous move forward for these athletic fields, because we have drain tiles that are crushed, irrigation that's outdated, which means we're not looking for water leaks every day. You know, there's a cascading effect when things start to break down, and we will be lighting three additional fields that we are currently, are not lit, and we'll be taking one, two, three, four, five fields, they'll be LED, not the old-fashioned HID, and so people don't have to worry, the light pollution, the light will go down on the field, it won't bleed out into the neighborhood, it won't bleed out into the park, which, you know, it's not the whole complex, but we have to start somewhere, so I do appreciate it. Do you have any further questions about the project?
No, and again, I thank you for the additional information. It helps to consider the costs and the revenue differences, and I know there's a, I think what the community should hear as well is that there's a plan for replacing it, there's an investment plan set aside for that, and I think that's a really smart thing to do, and I imagine that we'll see you in about, oh, I don't know, eight or nine months from now, and you'll say, we need more fields, and we'll have to talk about that, but, because ARPA will be done, but that will be great, because that's what's going to happen, so.
And I do also want to mention that I've been talking to our engineers, who are not under contract yet, but they're waiting. They're also going to look at not designing a solar field at Karst Farm Park, but to make sure that we can hook onto a solar field. So conceptual design will be part of this project, and they believe it shouldn't cost us anymore to do that. Bloodso, Rigger, Cooper, James has been just wonderful to work with, and they're trying to make this happen, because they live in this community, too.
Yes. Yes, definitely. Yeah, and as we, we care about things like overuse of water, that just even the pollution that is created by mowing the fields, just all kinds of things.
Fertilizers that are running off.
Yes, 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 yes. So I fully support this program as well. At this point, is there any other comment, or can we move forward with a vote? With no other comments, call for a vote on American Rescue Plan Act Policy Revision Number Eight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Ms. Whitmer. Thank you, Mr. M. G. Appreciate your comments. Next item.
I move approval of the TAM Capital Group LLC agreement, fund named County General, fund number 1,000, the amount of $42,000.
Second. Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, we've had lobbying service from Mr. Cockram, Rick Cockram, for a few years now. His company has merged with TAM Capital Group LLC, so he will still remain as our primary contact, it's just he will have somebody else to do the paperwork that is required for lobbying activity. So this is a similar contract, other than the change of the entity, but again, it's the same people who I feel have done a really strong job and has really helped us understand what's going on at the state and let us know where our input would be valuable, and we've given them some assignments as well.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, I just agree that having Mr. Cockram work for us has been extremely valuable. It's not always easy to figure out what's going on at the state.
Yeah, and he's so, he's so good about this. He's, he provides us great information and helps connect us with the right people, so I really appreciate his work.
Yes, he keeps us updated on even things that are being considered. You all know that last spring, I got a call at 9:30 at night saying, Penny, you better be up here at the Capitol by nine o'clock tomorrow morning, ready to testify on some stuff. We wouldn't have known about that without having somebody like Rick overseeing things. So, yes. Is there any public comment on this? See, none. I'll call for a vote on TAM Capital Group LLC agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of the Monroe Circuit Court Probation and Community Justice and Mediation Center, C.JAM MOU, fund name Lit Special Purpose Fund Number One-One-One-Four, and an amount now to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars.
Second. And we have Mr. Hatfield.
Yeah, good morning. Troy Hatfield, Deputy Chief Probation Officer, and I'm here today to hopefully renew our annual agreement with the Community Justice and Mediation Center. This agreement provides, provides victim offender mediation services with our juvenile clients who come in and refer to us throughout the year. I looked at a few stats, because we've had this agreement for quite some time. So, over the past five years, we've served well over a hundred juvenile clients coming through our office, and we were able to refer over to C.JAM. And we have successful outcomes in about two-thirds of those cases. Now, not everything is successful. I mean, sometimes you have juvenile families who don't quite want to participate, they're just not ready for that. And then, we also sometimes have victims who just aren't ready for those services as well. But, overall, we believe it is a tremendously valuable service to our clients, and we hope that we will be able to renew this agreement. And I also have Liz, the Executive Director from C.JAM, here to speak as well.
Ms. Grenet, hi.
Hi, I just wanted to thank you and ask and hope that you will approve this contract. It has been really important, and I think important to our community. It's the first restorative justice program that was ever existed in Monroe County, and it was came here, or a group of folks, I think your mom was involved, yeah, who decided that we needed an alternative way to deal with victims and helping folks that harm figure out ways to make amends and be accountable and learn. So, thank you so much, I appreciate it. And I really appreciate working with, the County Probation Department is wonderful to work with.
Comments or questions?
I'm always impressed with the work of C.JAM, Ms. Grenet, thank you, and all of your volunteers. Are you still looking for volunteers? Is that, yeah?
We are. In our next training session for our forty-hour restorative justice and basic mediation training starts February first. We have openings, and we do have scholarships that actually some of the Sophia Travis funds that you support help us to provide, eliminate barriers, so that anyone in our community that would love to take this training, at the end of the training, it qualifies folks to volunteer if they are so inclined, so, thanks.
I don't know how long ago I-
And you can go to our website, cjamcenter.org, and register.
Great. I don't know how long ago I took that training, but it still serves me well, so. Even though I no longer volunteer with C.JAM, that's been a while, but that training is something you carry with you, and so I encourage folks to consider it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I've always obviously been very supportive of C.JAM and the work of WARP in particular. I know that that's always been really quite successful, maybe not for everyone, but it's affected a lot of people in a very positive way.
Thank you.
One of the things I think I've heard you or others say is that it humanizes the victims for the offenders.
Yes.
And I hope that that helps to reshape certain individuals.
It does, and even when there are victims that aren't interested or ready to meet with the youth who harmed, we're able to actually provide feedback to that youth. So, oftentimes, there's still benefit. And also with victims, even if they're not willing or ready to meet with the person who harmed, we also can answer a lot of questions for them. And so, I think there are benefits even when we aren't able to actually do a victim offender process together, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, with that, I'll call for a vote on the Monroe County Circuit Court Probation and Community Justice and Mediation Center, MOU. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hatfield and Ms. Grenet.
Thank you.
Next item.
I move approval of the Ecologic LLC Service Agreement. Fund name Stormwater, fund number eleven ninety-seven, the amount of three thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty cents.
Second. And we have Ms. Patonia here.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is Kelsey Patonia, MS Four, Stormwater Coordinator with the Highway Department. So, this agreement with Ecologic is for removing invasive species and vegetation at two locations. One is removing fragmites, which is an invasive reed at the highway garage around the salt barns. It's starting to spread around our site, and it's very invasive, needs to be removed. The second location is within a very small gated area at the Fieldstone, Fieldstone Dam Regional Pond. The county's the only entity that has a key for that gate, and so, we'll go in and remove the woody vegetation to protect the dam, so. Do you have any questions?
You're a plant expert.
I believe you had said that another species that can tolerate that environment around the salt barn will be planted there to-
Correct, that is the plan. We'll need probably a couple of applications for the fragmites, so that will be done once that is completed. And Ecologic has provided recommendations for native grasses to plant in there, so I plan to do that.
Excellent, thank you.
Ms. Grenet, Thomas?
None. Thank you for working on this.
Yes, we all heard this last week at the Stormwater Board Meeting, so this is not new to us. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Ecologic LLC Service Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
I move approval of an agreement with Smith Design Group, Inc. for Engineering Services. Fund name Stormwater, fund number eleven ninety-seven, and the amount now to exceed one thousand five hundred dollars.
Second, there goes Patonia.
Hello again. So, this is a small engineering services contract with Smith Design Group to help design a storm sewer replacement, where we'll be increasing the size of the storm pipe under the road. This is based on calculations the engineer has already completed for an upstream project. And so, this is just complicated a little bit, because part of it will be located within the floodplain, so we have to ensure that it's designed properly and meets the state regulations. It's also directly in between two homes, so we want to make sure that we're protecting the property owners, and we have a potential utility conflict with a water main that will be in the area. So, this will provide, and ensure that it will be designed properly, and we will have smooth construction.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Again, we all heard this last week, reviewed it at the Stormwater Board Meeting. I've knocked doors down in that area, and I know that people do have problems because of the flooding that's going on, so I appreciate the additional work that you're looking at. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the Smith Design Group, Inc. Engineering Services Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item. Thank you, Ms. Patonia.
I move approval of Beam Longest N.F. LLC Supplemental for Bridge Number Nine Thirteen On-Call Agreement. Fund name Cumulative Bridge, Fund Number Eleven Thirty-five, and the amount of twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars.
Second, and Ms. Ridge.
Good morning. We currently have an on-call engineering agreement with Beam Longest N.F., and they are also our consultant for our bridge inspections that we are required to do around the county. We had had to do an emergency repair to Bridge Nine Thirteen over the summer. They helped us coordinate that and get the bid documents out. They also helped assisted us with the preliminary HBAA report that we just recently, that I just submitted with NDOT for their notice of funding availability to try and be awarded the project to have this bridge replaced. It's a historic bridge, so that was the, the HBAA report was necessary for that. So, we wanted to track our expenses for this bridge specifically, so we asked for the additional supplemental, so we could tie it to that bridge project.
Thank you. Comments or questions from my colleagues? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the Beam Longest N.F. LLC Supplemental for Bridge Number Nine Thirteen On-Call Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. We have no appointments today, but I will encourage people to go to our website and put in applications for boards and commissions for next year. You can continue to get your COVID testing and at the health center and at the public health clinic, and you can get your vaccinations at the public health clinic as well on Miller Drive. We continue to hold office hours, you can check on those on our calendar at co.monroe.in.us. And we are continuing to work with IV Tech and American Red Cross to sponsor blood drives. The next one is Wednesday, January third, from one to six, followed by Thursday, January fourth, from ten to three, and then also Thursday, February fifteenth, from one to six, and Friday, February sixteenth, from ten to three. All of those are at IV Tech. I don't know if any of you got the alerts this, earlier this week informing us of ice on the roads, but if you are not signed up, please go to our main webpage and click on the Monroe County Alert Notification System and sign up for that. We have extended the Assistance Fund for county residents who need assistance in paying for rent or utilities. These are for income-qualified individuals. And we also want to make sure that people remember that we have put a rural housing repair program into place. This is for low and moderate-income Monroe County homeowners to help with items that will help keep them in their homes, keep their homes habitable. So, if you're interested in that, please contact your township trustee, or if you live in Perry Township, please contact the Commissioner's Office, and we will walk through that with you. So, is there any other announcements? I also want to take this opportunity to thank John Hamilton and the outgoing members of the City Council for their service to the city of Bloomington, and I look forward to working with the new members of the City Council, the continuing members of the City Council, and to Mayor, with Mayor-elect Kerry Thompson. All those, new folks will be sworn in on January first, I believe at noon, in City Council Chambers. And so, look forward to our new folks, and I want to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday. With that, we are adjourned. We will be back here on Wednesday, January the third? Yes, the third?